Welcome to the Village of Buchanan, September 9th special board meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of
Pledge allegiance to the
And to the Republic, which stands my nation under God in the physical, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. On Zoom is trustee Laker and the administrator Marcus Sorano is on vacation until the 24th. In case of emergency, please use the exit door to my left to your right and also do not use the elevator. Use the staircase behind the elevator. Under new business, first I want to explain why we're having this special meeting. We are going to approve a grant application for some streets in the village here. There's a $15 million grant that Westchester County has put forward and we'd like to put some streets in there and also possibly receive some money. I believe it's a 50% grant, so whatever we can get, you know, we'll go after those grants and get some more infrastructure done. So first on the agenda is consider to approve the hiring of Jim Thatcher. Is Jim on?
He was on. Yeah, he's up on the top.
Hi, Jim. How are you? Thanks for joining us. You're welcome.
So you're going to explain to us, we're able this year to apply for a grant for our swimming pool. Last year we weren't able to, we didn't meet the criteria. So this is round two for New York Swims, so if you could just give us an overview.
Sure, I'll try to be relatively brief. We started talking to Marcus a year ago, more than a year ago about your pool, both the waiting pool and the main pool and some mechanical filtration piping. I think the aluminum waiting pool is also problematic with the Department of Health. Just a myriad of issues with your pool in terms of its upkeep and keeping it viable for the long term. So New York Swims is a program that the governor initiated a year ago with at least a couple rounds of funding through the State Office of Parks and Recreation, but the grant administered through the Dormitory Authority. Last year, you guys looked like a good candidate, but there was a scoring metric that was pass fail in order for your application to be even read or considered. And it was based on some census numbers and a need for swimming facilities in the county of which you're in, Westchester County. And that metric calculated to the point where you guys would not, we don't think you guys would have been considered. You wouldn't have gotten a fair consideration, so we pulled back and didn't do that grant application. Fast forward to now and round two has about $53 million in it statewide. They changed that metric, that initial pass fail criteria tweaked it a little bit. So there's still an emphasis on what they call underserved communities, communities that don't have access to swimming or have maybe a greater swimming need, if you will. But they changed the pass fail to the point where you guys are eligible and you would at least be considered. And I think you, I think you still have a decent shot. You're not defined as underserved in terms of your swimming need, but you are a disadvantaged community per the DEC and you have some other things going for you. Well, good and bad, I mean, obviously with, with what's happened with environmental justice and being a disadvantaged community with Indian Point and all that. But you have some things that make, going for certain grants in your favor. So, long story short is that for your pool and for the issues it's, you're dealing with, this is a capital grant program, design, engineering, bidding and construction to redo as much of the pool complex as you need to or would like to, to make it viable and affordable. You are eligible and a project in the range of, you know, 300,000 or higher would be eligible for 80% grant funding. And a lot of the first round winners were big cities, you know, Albany, Schenectady up north. There wasn't much in Westchester County, but out west Buffalo, Syracuse, some of the main largest municipalities that had multimillion dollar pool reconstruction projects, those have been funded. So hopefully they've kind of moved some of the bigger communities out of the way and can kind of dip down lower into the scale so that you guys have a, have a good shot. I think that's a pretty good synopsis, but it's, you know, on paper, it's really good for your pool and your needs. I'm sure it's going to be fairly competitive because pools just hasn't been a focus of the state for a long time. But you will, you will get considered and you will get a fair reading, we hope. So we resubmitted basically the same proposal from last year that, that Marcus was agreeable to and we'll kind of run, run with it if you agree to go for it. October 30th is the deadline and I think Marcus has already supplied us with some of the engineering and assessment reports and some, some details about your pool problems that we can work from. So I'll, I'll stop there unless there's questions.
So this would be for the kiddie pool and for the main pool, the grant application?
Yeah, I think it should be for both. I think you should try in one swoop to do as much as you need to do for the, for the entire complex. The grant program would also fund sort of, you know, ancillary facilities like bathhouses or fencing, you know, things that sort of are capital related, but around the pool or needed for the pool to make a complete complex. If you were just to do a splash pad somewhere next to the pool, that wouldn't qualify. You have to at least include a pool, a true pool facility in your project. But you can do some other things like restrooms, bathhouses, picnic pavilion or, you know, something that goes with your pool that may need some work as well. So you can kind of think of it more holistically at least for as much as you, as much as you can stand to do for that, your pool complex.
There's quite a bit that needs to be done, so we, we will look into that. And George Palmer, I see he's on this evening too. So we will see what else we can add there. Maybe some of the board members would like to go down to the pool and maybe get some ideas too. There might be some more fencing that needs to be done, I'm not sure. We'll also ask the recreation supervisor to see if there's any.
Weren't we talking about the storage facility for the chemicals as well? So, you know, that, I'm sure that would be part of the project.
He did say the restrooms, right? Yeah, okay, good. Those need to be upgraded. So we have a list, we'll have a list for you.
Sounds good. Yes, that would be eligible. Anything that makes your pool operate and, you know, viable as a complex.
All right, Jim, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Jim Thatcher and authorizing him to submit a grant application for New York Swims, round two. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, I am going to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding the Complete Streets program. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we've been discussing this for a while, the Complete Streets. Like I just said before, the county has a $15 million program. We have been, the board members have been discussing what streets they would like to put the grant in for. One of the grants is across the street from DeRose on Albany Post Road. Another one is Bannon Avenue in the King's Ferry intersection and also Tate Avenue in the King's Ferry intersection. And the other one is on Westchester Avenue. If that gets done on Westchester Avenue, it's from 4th Street to the school. That is the only section on Westchester Avenue that does not have a sidewalk and it's in the school area. So those were the three that the, the board came up with. Any comments from the board members? Okay, okay. Anyone who comes to speak, please give your name and...
Richard Punch in 179 King's Ferry Road. I got the notice in my mailbox, but I don't fully understand what are they going to do. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but somebody in Montrose complained about the intersections of King's Ferry and Bannon and King's Ferry and Tate. What are we, what's the village doing?
So what we're doing is the handicap accessible. It dips down and, you know, it has the little grates on it before it goes into the road.
Because it is already, the sidewalk already dips down.
No, no, you have to...
ADA compliant.
Yeah, it's, yeah, as Dan said, not ADA compliant.
Oh, okay, all right.
That's basically, we're not, we're not looking, and then striping, and then also striping it.
I, and being that you're talking about a handicap person, that intersection, since I've been up here since 1977, has got, is a disaster. You now have dozens of kids up and down. You can't, you get, you do not get a sight line if you're coming from further up on, on King's Ferry Road. And they're coming over the hill, people are coming out from Tate and it's just a matter of time until there's a real accident. So I wish that, that the parents would stop letting their kids go out on a busy street doing wheelies. And it's, it's, it's really, I feel sorry for the, for the kids because one of them is going to wind up being paralyzed or something. And they come around the corner from King's Ferry to go onto Tate and the turns are real wide. And this is not to mention about also what's, it's a thing of life, a quality of life is the amount of cars now and trucks without mufflers has gotten out of hand. There, I mean, I find, I find like I'm living in a, I don't know, a city street down in New York City. It's so loud and people speed. And the problem is you've got one jurisdiction on one side of the street and another jurisdiction on the other side of the street. So I don't know, do not know what the solution is, but it's just a matter of time before some people get hurt. And, and that's a very bad place. I know there was one individual on King's Ferry Road up into the Montrose section that tried for years with the town of Cortland to get speed bumps put in because it's, it's out of, out of control. But, so you're saying that this, this thing that's, you're going to put in grading?
And then also the, the walkways lines.
Oh yeah, the stripe lines you mean. Is that the ones that you have, that the car has to stop for?
No, it's just a crosswalk.
The reason why we're doing this actually is to protect the pedestrians walking across intersections. The pedestrian crosswalk will be setback. The, the ped ramps now, the pedestrian ramps that are in place right now actually cast you out into, into traffic. So they will be redesigned to, with ADA compliant tiles to proceed you into the crosswalk, send you into the crosswalk to the other side which will line up. They're actually going to be recessed, the crosswalks will be recessed with a stop bar being five feet back. George has a design that he drew up for both intersections and we can make that accessible to you somehow on the website if, if that's possible.
And the other thing was that I just noticed coming up here, they took the sign away for Buchanan.
Well, that, somebody had complained about the sign, not the condition of it, so we're going to reinstall another sign.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, Rich, you're at a, you're at a pretty dangerous intersection there. And I know I was coming out of Tate Avenue taking a left to go to Montrose and it's, you gotta move fast because they come up over the hill pretty fast there.
And they're speeding.
Yeah, probably, I, you know, I'm sure they are.
Several incidences where there was crashes and people coming over the hill screaming, yelling at people coming out of Tate. And the officers have said, if you weren't speeding, you'd be able to stop.
So is there, for years, I, I just don't remember, I don't travel there that often. Is there, there used to be a caution light there, is there anything there anymore?
It's a flashing light.
It's a flashing light.
Yeah, but I mean, you can't put a, if you put in a regular light, I could never get out of my driveway. You know, it's, it's a...
Yeah, like you said, I don't know what the answer is there.
It's just people having some consideration for the people in, in the neighborhood, you know. I see this white pickup truck going back and forth and replying, it hasn't got a, a muffler on it and, you know, it disturbs the whole neighborhood. And motorbikes, there's some people in motorbikes, the thing is real quiet, others have to rev the thing up. And it's just, it's not fair to the people who live here, you know. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments.
Thank you, Rich.
Anyone else? Okay.
Paola and John Paul from 3109 Albany Post Road. I believe that's what you're calling across from DeRose?
Yes.
We're not across from DeRose.
Well, it's just easier for me to explain to people where, the proximity of the area.
Well, I did looking into this and I don't think you guys were given all the information on this program, so I just have some facts and some, just, you know, matter of fact things that we feel about this. I think there's a few important things to mention about the Complete Streets funding. The funding roadway design features include sidewalks, lane striping, bicycle lanes, paved shoulders suitable for use of bicyclists, signage, crosswalks, pedestrian control signals, bus pull offs, curb cuts, raised crosswalks, ramps and traffic calming measures. So you can do all of these things, not just sidewalks. The New York DOT already reviewed the shoulder area in front of our property and found that there's no reason to install a sidewalk as far as safety and walkability is concerned. Just as important as to what I just mentioned, the Complete Streets funding for New York State encompasses county and state roads. However, it's important to note that the Westchester County program only applies to municipal roads, not state or county roads, just like Albany Post Road. Now, 3109 Albany Post Road is built in 1910 and in 115 years, this property has never had a sidewalk and has never had a pedestrian casualty in front of it, as far as we know. And whilst the Village of Buchanan wishes to install a sidewalk in front of our property, we don't believe that the county or Westchester DOT, West New York DOT would want to destroy private property on a stretch of land that has already been deemed safe for pedestrians. So we feel that submitting this site for you to get the approval for doing work on our property is not going to make it safer for schoolchildren as Buchanan narrative states, because it's already safe. If the village would like to discuss installing a narrow sidewalk in front of our property without destruction of the property,
Front of the wall.
We don't have a problem with that.
No, we don't, because we're all for the safety of the children also.
So even though...
We're not opposing the safety of the children.
They've already deemed it safe and we see bicycles go by there. We see the problem is the entrance to where the Carbone's property. That's where we see almost accidents every single day.
And there've been multiple, multiple accidents all the time.
The only other fear I have about installing a sidewalk in front of our property, and this is a valid concern, how many times we have almost been rear ended, rear ended coming into our property? And there have been several times where a child, teenager, younger, will be walking in front of our driveway, no problem. I slow down, I wait for them to pass. I have had people swerve around me into oncoming lanes to go around me because they don't know what I'm doing. I'm obviously waiting to pull into my driveway. So my fear is that installing a major drive, a major sidewalk in front of our property might create more problems for us and might not help with the safety of the children as you speak. Now, like I said, DOT already deemed this area safe. I know that for the town, you guys would love to see sidewalks going all the, you know, all the way across, that's great. But can we figure out a way not to destroy our property? I know it's on a different matter, but there's already three code violations going on from the Carbone's property that I haven't discussed with you guys, you know, in the past. That affect our living in there now has created that marshland in the back, which was never there before 25 years ago. Now, we've already been dealing with not having the full use of our property and to think about you taking more, it's really disturbing.
Because you would have to move our wall. And I'm not donating any property either. Because there had been mentioned by Marcus that I had to donate property, that's a no. I'm not donating.
Our worry is that if you were going to put like an eight foot sidewalk or something with grass with the sidewalks, you're going to destroy our wall, you're going to destroy our side retaining wall. You're most likely going to move our tree and possibly even take out one parking spot, which we have a small enough driveway as it is. So please understand where we're coming from. Now, to be honest with everybody, nobody has ever had a conversation with us about it.
No.
So when we heard the other day Marcus saying, oh, we're going to have to go to litigation because we're not a standstill.
You didn't discuss anything with us.
Nobody ever said a word to us about anything.
Well, that's news to me also.
So that's, that's why we're here.
Yeah, that's why we're here.
To make sure that everybody's aware of everything that's going on.
We could work something out, we could work something out, you know, let's not move our wall because our wall protects our house.
It actually was hit by a car many years ago.
It was actually hit by a car by a drunk driver. So we need that, we need our, our wall there to protect our house from being hit by cars.
So even if today is just going to show you the importance of what we feel not having it there for, or at least you know that nobody had, I mean, I sent an email to the two of you a while back, I didn't get a response. I kind of assumed I wouldn't, but now that's not a here or there, but at least you know now definitely. We, besides the initial talking about it with the Carbone Project started and you guys were just talking about, we weren't even here, I just watched the videos and heard discussion. And then when I heard you guys bringing it up again recently and twice now, I've heard it stated that, oh, we haven't been able to get anywhere, we're just going to litigation.
We were never spoken to.
Well, I'm seeing the attorney's face, that's probably news to her too.
So I just want you to be aware of that, that we're not like looking to, oh my God, you know, fight, you know. I'm just saying it's, it's never been discussed.
It's never been discussed with us about what could possibly be do. If you want to put a small sidewalk in front of a wall, we have no problem with that. We want the children to be safe, we understand, you know, but to automatically start talking about litigation and that we don't want to cooperate when nothing has ever been said to us. The last conversation we had was in a planning board meeting where Marcus made a comment that we just had to donate the property and Jeff did too, and I was like, the hell I will, I'm not.
I mean, like I said, our, our point is if we can figure out a way that you want to put something there with minimal, you know, interfering with our property, because we're already having the problem in the back. If you guys would like me to let you know about the code violations, I will have no problem letting you know, but they were in place by the board members in 2020, I mean, 2000, the year 2000, sorry. But, um, so it's been ongoing. But if you want to know what they are, I can let you know, no problem, I can write you a note saying what they are. I don't know if that's going to help anything, but to have anything further done with the treatment we've already been getting from our neighbor,
Not good.
we really don't want to get involved in that. So like I said, if you can come up with an idea of what we can do that can make us both happy, even if you have an idea that maybe it's going to move the wall or something, but show us exactly how it's going to affect it, hopefully not taking away a parking spot because as you see, we like our cars, you know, and we need the spots. Like I said, we don't have a problem with making it safer for people, even though it already is in our, and obviously,
According to the DOT, it's already safe. And it has been for 115 years.
So, I mean, just, I just want to be known that we're not fighting like it's made it seem to be on this. We haven't even been, you know, approached about this. So we just want to make that, make everybody here aware, anybody that's listening, you guys aware that it's not right what's going on.
So no one approached you to discuss this?
Never.
We've never been approached.
Only from hearing it through meetings, because I watched the meetings. That's the only way I've seen it discussed.
And who mentioned litigation to you?
It wasn't mentioned to me, but Marcus in the past two meetings, you can even go see, and he says, when you said, you stated, hey, how are we on that, the sidewalks? I actually believe, I think you said it Anthony.
I did check it.
And he goes, oh, well, you know, they're not budging on that, oh, we're, we're just going to have to go to litigation. I was shocked. I was sitting at home going, what the, you know, what is this?
But if we have to, we have to.
You know, but...
Well, listen, I just want to say something, I'm really sorry that the process has been difficult for you and that you have not been informed. Some of what you've said is new to me, so on my behalf, I'll ask that you give us a chance to talk as a board to see if we can have a happy medium. Okay, I don't think anyone here is trying to disrupt your life or to make things difficult for you. And a lot of what you've said is new to me.
And on the other hand too, if I can just interject here, that the way you just came in and presented yourselves helps, okay?
Absolutely.
We appreciate you coming in and having the right frame of mind to try and work it out.
Yeah, as you can see, I'm a little heated, I'm sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
You have every right to.
You explained it very well and we appreciate it.
We already feel like we're being trampled on with all the construction going on, that the future one in front of us and the one next to our house, which is going to be very, very disruptive. I mean, like I said, all of this has been upsetting. And every time we come to a board meeting, we feel like we're being trampled on and we're not heard. The planning board, the planning, you guys have nothing to do with that. You know, the planning board meeting, we feel like we're being trampled on. And we're not being heard, we're not being trampled on and now we've even making up stories that we have to go to litigation and no one even said anything to us, all of this is very upsetting.
Well, on my behalf, I can say I'm sorry about that. I don't think anyone on this board had the intention of upsetting you.
I appreciate that.
And I would second that, well, I don't think that was ever the intent on anybody on the board. And some of what we're hearing here is, you know...
It's new to us.
Yeah.
So give us a chance to speak and I, I'll tell you personally, we will get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely.
So we will have a discussion with the engineer also. I don't know, Anthony knows more about sidewalks, I don't know if we could make it smaller, maybe a walking path instead, I'm, I'm not sure that it doesn't affect your wall. I'm, you know, I'm not sure, but, you know.
Because we know that's expensive to move and I think at first in the planning board, they had mentioned that Carbone is supposed to take care of all of it.
But then he backed out of it.
But then he backed out of it.
Because of a meeting, I learned that.
Well, that's, that's where, initially where we went wrong. The planning board should never have given any proof or anything until this was, this was rectified. And that's where we went wrong. And that's why we are on hook for this now to try and to make this right. So I feel that amongst ourselves, or we will discuss it. I, personally, there's, I don't know if there's been a survey, we lay out a curb lines or anything with DOT. I mean, there is drawings, I understand, so I don't know where it would fall, the sidewalk and how. There's going to be a minimum and a maximum for DOT right, right of ways to, to put sidewalk in. And we can talk with George over that and see how we can make it work with the pre-existing property lines and, and, and property, what we, what we need to use and for the safety of whoever accesses the sidewalk, of course. You know, without impacting your property.
Or your safety.
Or your safety.
You just brought up something which I guess I'll mention now. You said that there has been surveys done, yes. Three different people came to the, in front of our house on the sides and I talked to Marcus about it because he didn't let us know when he was coming. I said, please let us know. Second time, nobody, he didn't let us know, people there again. Third time, he said, okay, there's going to be people in front of your house, they're, they're from the DOT, they're just doing something over there from the DOT. I said, okay, great. So after he's done, I go outside to the front of my property and I had smashed in a metal pipe into where the, you know, retaining wall is here and I put in a pipe in the ground just to remind myself where the edge of our property is. And I came out and I noticed that there was a wooden stake with a pink flag put right where I put that pole, post. There was a metal rod about this big. So I saw and I said, pipe found corner of property. And I said, I started laughing, I said, that's not the corner of the property. I sent Marcus a tech, email saying, Marcus, just to let you know, somebody came by here and they put a mark in here, but it's incorrect. I said, if you would like me to show you where it's supposed to go, no problem, please let me know. Next thing you know, the Carbones are in front of our house staring at the mark. The police show up blaming her for criminal activity of possibly moving stuff.
Yeah, for that I went around moving markers and then they went to DeRose and they went to Gallon Measure to see if they had video of me going around moving things, so I was accused.
I am so sorry that you're going through that.
I just said, listen, the mark is in the wrong place. Why Carbone showed up instead of the DOT like I was told was going to be there? That's, I don't know.
Well, he paid for the survey, that's probably why he showed up. And those are actually illegal to move, but I'm not, I'm not saying you guys move them, I'm just saying they are illegal to move.
Yes, I'm aware of that, but the problem is I put this one on my property.
Well, if you, yeah, I mean, that should have, they should have located the corner and the property lines. And, um, yeah, I, you know, this is a lot of, of information that I have. And once again, I will reflect on, you did send me an email, I'm sorry I didn't get back to you on that. And now that this has become an issue, you know, and it's always been an issue, not, not saying that it wasn't. I, I'm definitely going to look into it and see with, with George and the rest of us will look into it and see how we can effectively make it safe. Not to say that it's not safe, you already did your due diligence on that, but to make it safe and for... make it safe, not to say that it's not safe. You already did your due diligence on that, but to make it safe and for, if, cuz you know, if you, if you look at the, the properties, right, you're gonna have, uh, some, whatever, I don't know, eventually we're gonna have a property there that's gonna have a crosswalk coming from the school, and, um, it's gonna have a sidewalk in front of it. So ultimately, we would like to, for safety issues, because it is a, a busy road, connect that sidewalk to the, where the Dunkin' Donuts facility is, and then run that all the way down to the AMS project, and aesthetically, it would look right, right? And safety wise, it would be the proper thing to do. But we don't wanna impact your property. That's not why we're doing it. We're trying to do it the softest way as possible, and, and that's what we need to include our engineer involved and let the engineering end of it fix this for us.
Okay.
And then we'll bring it to you, present it to you, so you can put your input in and maybe follow up with what you think and, and, and we'll, we'll work together on it. I think the rest of us.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. So maybe we'll ask you to come back to another board meeting, a workshop, and then we could all
Sure.
work it out.
Cuz I remember the, the first conversations that were being had, once again, at the meetings we were listening to, that was discussed, where we were talking, oh, you're gonna have to move the wall, you're gonna have to remove the tree, you're gonna have to, and that's, it was like, wait a second, you know, we kinda freaked a little bit about that, but, you know, I'm glad we had this conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah, it should have been done a long time ago. It should have been done a long time ago. And, and, uh, uh, once again, we'll, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm interested in looking into it. I'm sure everybody else.
So am I, so am I.
Yep, I think we're all in agreement on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in and explaining that to us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
So if there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so you know, um, we, we're still gonna put in for the grant, but we might be able to use that to, you know.
I did notice that it said the, um, the Westchester County portion is not for state roads, so that might be an issue.
Supposedly, the administrator called Westchester County and said that they would include that. So, you know, we'll see, we, you know, doesn't guarantee we're gonna get the grant either, so.
But again, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Have a nice.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Bye bye.
I guess I could start reading. Okay, so whereas the Village Buchanan in Westchester County recognized the importance of creating safe, accessible, and inclusive transportation infrastructure for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and motorcycles, motors of all ages and abilities, and whereas Westchester County has announced the availability of fifteen million in funding through its Complete Streets Municipal Assistance Program to support local municipalities in the design and implementation of various complete streets and related sev- safety improvement projects on municipal roadways. And whereas the Village Buchanan intends to submit up to three separate applications to the Complete Streets Municipal Assistance Program to secure funding for a local Complete Streets Initiative that aligns with the county's goals of enhancing pedestrian and bicycle safety, mobility, and community livability. And whereas the village board acknowledges that successful implementation of a Complete Streets Project After Grant Award requires collaboration with Westchester County, including entering into an intermunicipal agreement and complying with applicable procurement and design standards. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator and relevant staff to prepare and submit up to three separate applications to the Westchester County Complete Streets Municipal Assistance Program by September nineteenth, twenty twenty five, deadline to support the village sidewalk and safety improvement projects initiative, and now therefore be resolved that the Village Buchanan will work cooperatively with Westchester County throughout the planning, design, and implementation phases of the Complete Streets Initiative, including participation in virtual information sessions and coordination with county-selected engineering and design firms, and therefore, and now therefore be it result, further resolved that the Board of Trustees supports the principles of Complete Streets and affirms its dedication to improving and providing safe transportation infrastructure for the benefit of all community ma- members. Can I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And Steve, I apologize. I, I forget when people are on Zoom. I just.
Oh, no problem.
Okay.
I gave my eye.
Okay, good. Thank you. Alrighty, um, the next is a resolution authoriting, authorizing applications to the Westchester County, oh, we just did that. I'm sorry, I apologize. Resolution demonstrating the Village Buchanan's financial commitment to the sidewalk and safety improvement projects. We have to also have that submitted. So. Yes, give me a second. Okay. Cindy, you confused me. You switched them around. I'm good. I got it. Whereas the Village Buchanan in Westchester County recognized the importance of safe and accessible pedestrian and non-vehicle traffic infrastructure for the well-being of its residents and visitors. And whereas the village board has identified the sidewalk and sa- safety improvement projects as a priority initiative to enhance public safety, improve walkability, and support community connectivity to important facilities and destinations. Whereas the village intends to pursue a grant funding opportunity through the Complete Streets Municipal Assistance Program administered by Westchester County. And whereas the Village Buchanan is committed to providing necessary local financial support to ensure the successful implementation of the sidewalk and safety improvements project if the county awards grant funding to the village. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the allocation of municipal funds toward the required match for design and construction projects for planning, design, and construction phases of the sidewalk and safety improvement projects at an appropriate time after grant funding award and working with Westchester County. Be it further resolved that the village board directs the village administrator, administrator and relevant departments to take all necessary actions to proceed with the implementation of the projects in accordance with applicable laws and regulations and the Complete Streets Municipal Assistance Program through Westchester County. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I heard you that time, Steve. Okay, so the, um, the village, so, so the residents know, the village has been trying to, uh, work out an agreement with Certainty, um, for a road impact um, benefit. And I, um, we've gotten more information today. We've worked back and forth. Um, there's different, uh, requirements that they're asking for that I, I, that are, that's what they want. It's a definite, they want these certain things regarding the LWRP. All their demands, um, I just, uh, I'm sorry, but I, I just, uh, I can't go along with this. Um, and so I believe, um, and I'm going to ask the board in a minute, I believe we're at an impasse. Um, I don't see us moving this forward. Um, like I said, we've had traffic studies, um, we spent money on traffic studies to see what the impacts were on Broadway, and there's just different requirements, um, from them that I don't think is in the village's best interest. So I would like to, um, ask anyone, um, if they think that we should continue or go forward with this.
No, I don't. We've been going back and forth for over a year. I do find that the CBA is one-sided, and there is no benefit to the village. I agree one hundred percent with what you said. And at this point, we, I've said it in emails, and I've said it to the board, we are at, at an impasse. They want what they want. We want what the residents need. So to me, to continue would be fruitless. So my answer is no.
Uh, I would agree with, uh, Alilda and the mayor on that. I, I don't feel the need to move forward on this, not to put the village in a detrimental situation.
I, well, I, uh, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, just, uh, just real quick, but I, I think I'm, I'm the, the complete opposite of, of the three cent, uh, you know, statements stated before. I think that Certainty is, is now our biggest employer. It, it is a part of the village, as much as the residents are. You know, community, uh, businesses are part of the community just as much. And, uh, I think it's be- uh, beneficial to the residents to have this additional income come in. And the fact that, you know, we couldn't get it over the finish line, I, I still think that we could work something out with them. Um, and I think that the discussions should continue.
So Steve, I'm, just, just out of curiosity, how do you think that we can move this forward? How, how do you think we can bring this over the finish line?
Yeah, I think easily. I think if we put together an agreement that's satisfactory to the board, and we present it to them and say, this, this is what we have in mind. And, and because we have had meetings, they're an executive session, I won't go into, into too much details, but I believe that we were very close, both sides, and, uh, somehow along the way, when it came time to writing up an agreement, things just fell apart. And that's unfortunate. But I think if we put together our own agreement that we think is satisfactory, we had one with Holtech, uh, very similar, and I think we could probably present something similar, um, and work with them.
Well, we had an, an agreement in principle verbally from them. They knew what should, should have been in the agreement, but then they went and added on all these additional wants that weren't even discussed. So.
Well, and then I think, you know, that kinda lays out how I think we handle that poorly. Because I've never had successful negotiations where I didn't present what I wanted to the other side. I didn't sit back and let the other side dictate what they wanted.
But we had conversations with them, Steve, and we shared with them what the villagers' needs were. They listened, walked away, and then wrote their own agreement. So I don't agree with that. I'm sorry. I think we've said everything we've had to say, and they've gone ahead and done whatever they've wanted. So I still stand by my.
We're talking about, you know, they are a taxpayer in this village.
So are the businesses here.
But we're talking about them as if they're an outside entity.
No, I disagree with that. I'm, I'm not referring to them as an outside entity. I'm referring to them as an entity that wants what they want, regardless of what the village needs. So, no, I disagree.
Any entity, any, you know, the village wants what, what we want, and we should present what we want in an agreement.
But we did. We've had meetings with them. We have. We, we have the lawyer. We have our engineer. We have our planner.
We had meetings with them.
They have put their heads together, provided their own input, and they still come back with what they want.
And we sat back and said, please provide us with an agreement. And they put in everything that they wanted to. We should have took the initiative to put out the agreement that we want and present it to them.
Steve, my understanding is that they're not going to cave or, or give in on their demands, several of their demands. If I thought there was a way, or any of us thought there was a way that we could work out some type of an agreement, we would. Um, remember, we did the traffic studies, um, the original impacts came in at a very much higher price. Um, then it was lessened and discounted and down to forty-two thousand dollars. Um, I, it, it's just some of the items that they're asking for. I, I firmly believe that they will not, uh, budge on. And the items that they won't budge on, I think, are not in the village's best interest.
I agree.
I mean, we'd all like to get, this, the original plan was to get money to compensate the village for the impacts of, of their big trucks on Broadway and the damage that the big trucks do on Broadway. So the original agreement, and, and Dan alluded to it, was that, um, they would, um, they understood that there was an impact, and then, um, we, um, we were just, you know, we were just getting ready to do the zoning and everything, and we understood where they were, and we thought we were pretty much close to an agreement at that time until they come along with their, uh, community benefit. And it, it took a long time because I kept asking our attorney, so have they sent the community benefit? Have they sent it? No, 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 no. So I, I'm sorry that this fell apart. I, I was, we were all hopeful um, that the village would receive some money for the impact. But, um, it, it definitely fell, fell apart, and I just see what their, their demands. I, I don't see us coming to an agreement. Stephanie, you've been involved. Do you wanna say anything?
I'd like to say something, if I can get a minute.
Sorry, Anthony. Sorry.
So I agree with everybody here, including Steve. And one of my, my biggest, um, problems here is exactly what Steve did say. Yeah, I feel like we're at an impasse too. I feel like there's, there's been talks, and yes, I'm done negotiating with them. I feel the same as everybody else. The negotiations were done. The, the, they have been completed. We came to an agreement. The agreement should have been written by us, and we should have submitted it. We gave them the opportunity. Now, of course, they're gonna protect themselves and put all kinds of stuff in there that protects them in the future. And that's what they're looking for, protection, because they're, they're, they're afraid of what could happen to them if, if, in the future, if the board changes or anything like that. I get it. I understand they wanna be protected. But we have to protect our village.
Absolutely.
Okay? That's why we should have, out of the best interest of our residents, submitted them what we think the agreement should have been, not what they think the agreement should be. And I still stand with that.
But they stood, they would have come back with their little rebuttal.
And they can come back with whatever we want. And then we could have said, okay, now, this is what we want. You can put in what you think is necessary, but this is where we draw the line. We came, we allowed them to protect themselves at every corner that they can by writing their own agreement. I don't know who does that. I mean, we, we really, we really should have submitted it ourselves. And I still feel that we can. And if, if we're not gonna do it, then I don't think we're doing our due diligence to fo- to fulfill this negotiation.
Can I just say something?
Absolutely. I think our agreement would have been what we all thought we agreed to, which Anthony Miranda and I had numerous discussions on, which was forty-two thousand a year, right, for road improvements. We had been talking with Dave about rezoning and maybe an overlay or what we're gonna do. We're leaving them out of that. We're not touching it, right? We're gonna move on to the rest of, of west of, you know, Holtech and on. So that's what the agreement would have looked like. And if you think that they would have said, okay, we would have seen this, and this, and this right attached to it.
I agree. No, no doubt about it.
Right.
But then.
They know what the agreement was.
But then when they would know where we're coming, this is as simple as it gets. This is our agreement. This is as simple as it gets. This is all we want. You can't, we can't guarantee you protection from anything.
Right.
We can't do that. It's impossible. You know, there's too many, too many citizens involved. Community, community members that have put input in, in the LWRP, that have, have had input in this. But ultimately, the LWRP is a state. Is, is, it's, it's with the state, correct. So even whatever we say, I mean, am I wrong to say that the state can come in and say whatever they want after the fact anyway?
They're gonna give comments, right?
They're gonna give comments, recommendations. I spoke to them today. I spoke, called up the Department of State. They are not finished yet with their comments. They're looking probably in the next month to, uh, send that back to the community. Then after that, there's a sixty-day, um, pub, there's a sixty-day comment period. Um, I, I myself, when I got the document, the, the community benefit, was quite surprised. And I'm, there's just a major disconnect, and I, I don't see it being reconnected because I'm understanding, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, there are, there are items in there. There's no discussion. That's what they want, and that's it.
It's non-negotiable. They have non-negotiables in there. Now, the ones we got today, we obviously haven't talked to.
Did you redline it and send it back to them?
I would redline everything and send it back to them.
Did you send it back to them?
And, and tell them that's either acceptable or not acceptable.
Well, it's not really redlined.
The negotiation part of it's done.
It was done by highlight and yellow.
What I'm saying, so, so you redline their contract and send it back to them, before we say, oh, this is over.
Okay, but I'll redline everything in it.
Then redline whatever you want, and that's exactly what I want you to do. That's doing our due diligence.
And the new one?
Yeah. Every, all of them.
Anthony and I have had this fight.
I don't care. I want Anthony, Paul, all of them to see.
That we've redlined it all.
And then I feel like our due diligence is done.
I will happy to redline it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
A hundred percent.
It's all gonna be redlined. For the record, you have had this discussion anyway with their lawyer.
I know what you're saying. He wants it in writing.
I don't care about their lawyer. He works for his client.
I know, but they hired him.
So Stephanie, send back what the, our original agreement was, and.
No, and then redline all of this.
Yeah, I wouldn't even redline it. Send our agreement. What we would be willing to sign. And if it's not, then it's not.
So which one is it? Redline all of this?
Whatever you feel like you should do, but if you, if you work for us, I say you write your own agreement, and we send it, and that's it.
And just say that's it.
Paragraph.
I don't care if it's three sentences or ten sentences.
Well, it won't be three sentences. It would be an agreement to, you know, take them off the, uh, rezoning, you know, agenda, which is what we agreed to, I thought. And then this came through. And I've had a lot of discussions with him, saying, how And I've had a lot of discussions with him saying, how did this turn into this? Well, you know, we're a corporation, the corporate, we got.
Because they're looking for protection. They're gonna wanna invest a ton of money in that facility, and that's what they're looking for, protection. And that's exactly what's going on. We can't offer them a guarantee.
Right.
No, but they, they have zoning. They're an as-of-right business. They are permitted to run their business. So it's, it's not like we're taking away their zoning or, you know, so it's an as-of-right business. So they're already permitted to do what they do.
And nobody's looking to take that away from them.
No.
And I think they know that from all of us. We all feel the same way about, we want them to stay as a corporation.
We've said it to them.
And we're not looking to take that away from them. We want them to stay. We're happy they're here. We're a good community member. They've, 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 they've got involved in local communities all over the place, and we appreciate all that they've done. But now we need to get what we need to get for our impacted roads. And that's what the deal was about, and I think that, that's what the agreement should say, not what they said, what we say.
Okay.
I agree.
It'll be two pages and I'll send it.
All right, thank you.
And they're gonna send me this back.
I don't care. Then it's done.
Then it's done?
Then it's done.
All right, if that's what it takes, let's do it.
I will send, I will draft that tomorrow.
Steve, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, by taking such a hard stance and just saying, no, I think we're doing a disservice to the, to the residents. We have to look at every avenue. I think we put together what we wanted to say and send it over to them. If it's no, it's no. I understand the negotiations are finished. I thought we finished that months ago. But I just think we need to just look at every avenue and see if we can come to some agreement or not.
Steve, just so you know, I think, I think the frustration is coming from every time we speak with these people, they seem to move the goalposts. And, and it, it's, eventually, you have to draw a line in the sand, and that, that, that's my feeling on it. If, but I, but if, again, I don't wanna.
And now we're drawing our line.
Right, right. Can, can I finish, please? So have Stephanie draft up our version? They either take it or they don't, and, and then that's it. But, you know, the goalposts always seem to move with them, always.
Always.
We gave them that opportunity. By allowing them to write the, the, the agreement. We should have wrote the agreement from the beginning. We actually said that to them, get an agreement together and send it back to us, and that's where we went wrong.
Well, I, I think, I think because it was quote-unquote a community benefit agreement, i- it was more of a one-sided agreement. And I think they felt, since they were giving the money uh, to us for the road impacts, that they should also do the um, the agreement, because it was their community benefit um, agreement. That's, that's what I'm thinking, how they were thinking at this time.
Then they should have discussed the CBA stuff that they have in there at our negotiations.
Yeah, but you know, Anthony, Stephanie kept asking for this information for the longest time. Where is the community benefit? Where is it? Where is it? Where is it?
Well, I get what Anthony's saying too. They should have been more honest when we were sitting.
They weren't honest when we did our negotiations with the CBA, with all that stuff they put in there. Nobody brought it up at the negotiations, and that's why if we would have sent them, this is how simple it is.
Oh, I'll send it.
This is how simple it is. This is what we want, and this is how we're, this is, this is all we're gonna do, and we're gonna get this done, or there's not gonna be anything.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, so am I.
So am I. That's fine.
Yep.
Very simple, which we thought was going to be simple like that.
Well, I'm sorry that has to come to this, and Stephanie has to do more work, but.
No, I don't mind that. It's just, you know, I'm gonna send it and they're gonna be like, are you kidding me?
Because none of that BS that's in there came out in the meetings. Nope.
No, of course not.
That's what was so frustrating. I'm glad you're saying that, cause that was, was so frustrating when I read it. I'm thinking.
No, I see you said, wrote troubling. The, I, I see that it's troubling. It's troubling because they bullshit us.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then today I get they're rewriting your LWRP and sending it back to the state with what they want.
And today you get the exhibits. Today you got the exhibits.
That's what I mean.
No, that's ridiculous.
And I'm, I'm just sorry this had to come to this. I, I didn't expect it was going to derail like this, but.
But if Steve's concerns are correct, then I'll write it and, and we'll see what they do. I don't think they're gonna come to the table on it. I think they're gonna say, you're kidding me, right? We gave you what we'll, we'll sign.
We're never know.
And then at that point, it stops.
So we're telling them, we're telling them, we're not signing what they put in there.
And then at that point, it stops.
It's perfect. I'll do it tomorrow. I'd be happy to do it.
I, yeah, I think we all thought it would be simpler than it ended up becoming.
Because of the talks we had. It seemed to be we were in agreement.
Yeah.
Somehow.
Until they moved the goalposts.
And Stephanie, thank you, because I know you've gone back and forth with them.
It's frustrating.
I know it is. Trust me, I know.
You put a lot of time into this.
When did it come to this? Well, you don't understand. We call corporate. We have to answer to corporate. What do I know, you know? So we have to kinda protect it.
Well, maybe corporate will get a copy of our agreement.
Yeah.
And they can think about that.
And they'll send it back. They'll send it back.
And if not, then it's over.
Yes.
I mean, cause the other thing that he was writing about five years versus your ten-year, we could have worked that out. That was simple stuff.
But then it was only.
We do a ten-year. We work it out. But then when it got to all of this, I was like, there's no point in arguing about the five-year and the auditing.
Oh, no, 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 no.
There was no point in even arguing that because there was so much we couldn't agree to that.
We won't.
It got crazy.
And then after all this, it was only a five-year agreement, and they would have to agree to re-up it. It, like unilaterally, they would agree if the, if it was renewed after five years.
Cause they weren't obligated.
And they want reimbursements.
Yeah, so it, it, we, we, this spiraled, yeah.
Yes, too much. It's too much.
So we, we're on a path now. We know what to do. Let's just move forward, and hopefully it, it ends, it ends up in a positive direction, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Steve, did you have anything else? You're good?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, you have just a few things for us?
Oh, you do?
Oh, you wanna talk about it now?
Yeah, do, yeah, we got a few minutes. We can, we can do this.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Um, Jackie just wanted to let you know about the Halloween party. This is what she'd like to do this year, just a party rather than.
Oh, no parade this year?
Rather than a parade, just down at the pavilion.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, wear costumes. She wants to have music and candy, and then she would like volunteers to set up their own candy tables.
Oh, just like the beautification committee usually does on the streets, but instead at the pavilion?
Cause there's not many people that come around the street, so she thought in the pavilion it might just be cozy.
And it's on a Friday night this year, I think, Halloween.
Uh, October twenty-sixth, I think.
Oh, she's gonna do it on a different date? Okay.
She said four to five P M. It was a Saturday.
Okay.
Four to five? Oh, a Saturday, okay.
Yeah, on a Saturday.
All right. Well, try something different, right?
Yeah, right. That's what she thought. And the other thing was, um, the Cub Scouts wrote her an email. It's a kindergarten den, and they're just looking for a spot for uh, short meetings, thirty to sixty minutes, one or two times a month. They want to know if they could use the pavilion starting in October.
It's gonna get a little chilly there.
It's gonna get cold.
I know, I know. They have insurance. They can pay a fee if we want. Though I just was gonna ask you what.
What about the board's thoughts? I, I'm, these are little, little ones, and we had a movie a couple of years ago in October, and it was bitter cold.
About the community.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Why, on a Tuesday or Thursday, like a night that we're here?
Down in the highway garage, we used to.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
I would say either one. I have no problem with it, and I wouldn't charge a fee.
Maybe, yeah.
No, no.
So they should maybe ask a, send an email asking to waive the fee.
Yeah. Oh, well, 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 when, they wanna start in October, cause we, yeah.
Yeah, they don't have any specific dates or times yet.
So put that on the agenda for us to approve it, to waive the fee.
Yeah.
Okay, good. No, that's, oh my, I can't see them in the.
No, they're gonna be cold.
I know, little things. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, we're good.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
No, I don't.
No, I'm good. All right, so I'd like to make, Steve, do you have anything before we go?
No, nothing to make. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great Buchanan day.